It's 7:00 PM, July 19th, 2022. We're calling the workshop meeting, planning for the planning board to order. Please stand for the. Okay, this is just for information purposes for everybody that's here. The town board's going to have a meeting on July 25th at 6:00 PM. What they've asked us to do is just weigh in on the short-term rental regulations, nothing else, not whether there should be short-term rentals, but the law is or anything. We're just here to look at, they gave us paperwork from different towns, and one of our suggestions as far as the regulations for short-term rentals for them to decide, as far as any questions about whether a short-term rental is legal, whether we should have them or not, you're gonna have to go to the town board because we don't really have any power to do anything about that. And it's their decision, even what we suggest to them from our workshop tonight, they could throw it out or keep it, it's totally up to them. We're just doing what they ask at this point and submitting our ideas to them. And hopefully we come to some agreement.
Do you want me to do a roll call?
Yes, go ahead.
Josh Fisher.
Here.
Barb Conway.
Here.
Dane Morton is not here. Kyle McMahon, Tony Springer, Jason Tyler, and Howard Schaefer is not here. Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have our lawyer tonight, right?
Right.
Not that we need him, this is just a... Okay, um. We're gonna get right into what we think, but I guess I'm gonna ask if somebody has something to say, you know, if they'd like to say something before we get started. Would you like to come up to the podium and? Anyone or?
Good evening, folks.
Please just name an address. Speak into the mic and give your name.
Dick Burdenko, 24 Davenport Drive. I don't know if Mrs. Putney has issued out these.
Yeah, we got your letter.
I just wanted to drive home the fact that we live on a dead-end street. We have a few three short-term rentals. They're not legal in the HR zone. You should have the graphs.
Like I said, we can't determine that as a, this board, you'd have to go to the town.
I'm just presenting, John, what you.
I don't know if they're legal or not based on what your letter says, because I really don't know.
Okay, that's all right. Okay. But the graph shows that hotel use is not allowed.
He's referring to the use table in our zoning ordinance.
Right. The person who purchased 32 Davenport Drive, next to our property, is listed as a limited liability company organized under liability LLC and is marketed by the owner through the short-term rental website of Verbo. The owner does not live on the premises, never did have preside there. And as this property is a short-term rental, the owner is required to pay occupancy tax to the county in the local law number five of 2018, which is the latest amended law for accounting. Definition, hotels and motels include short-term rental, as well as that, okay. Short-term rental, vacation rental, is defined as the rental of any dwelling unit or any portion thereof for fewer than 30 days. And they've referred to section C 3C of this law defines the term hotel or motel as any facility providing lodging on an overnight basis and shall include those facilities designated and commonly known as bed and breakfast and housekeeping cottages with four or more units and tourist facilities, short-term vacation rentals.
So I definitely understand where you're coming from. I talked to you, you told me what the situation is. Unfortunately, that's gotta, it's gotta be the town board, because we don't.
No, I'm not.
No, I'm just, I'm, I don't.
Belong to this community and everything. As people on this panel, you carry some weight.
Well, we can't, we really don't.
Listen, John.
That's not what we were asked to do tonight. We were asked, they said there's gonna be short-term rentals, this is what we want you to do, not to tell us what there should be short-term rentals or not. If, I think if we as, like you said, residents, if we have a problem, we should go to the town board, just like you will be in the audience and, and, you know.
Can I finish this letter, John?
Oh, sure.
Because of Lake Luzerne zoning ordinance states that hotels and motels are not allowable in the Hamlet residential zone. The short-term rentals located at Davenport Drive are not currently legal uses of the properties. The Hamlet residential zone is defined as, and you can read that, residential development in a neighborhood setting. The purpose is to create a safe haven for people to live and conduct their domestic activities. A degree of privacy is expected, especially in the yard, in the house, in the house and rear yards. When the definitions of other zones within the Lake Luzerne ordinance are examined, it is clear that the intent of the current zoning ordinance is to prohibit hotel and motel use in the purely residential areas. Hamlet commercial allows for that. Residential resort allows for that. Lake Luzerne encompasses about 52 square miles. 2% is residential Hamlet. 2% is a very small area. We have lived on Davenport Drive 45 years, had to take, had to take the actions we've had to take since 32 Davenport Drive converted, their short-term rentals speak volumes, not use on a fixed income. Last year, we erected our first privacy fence in 45 years to better separate us from high-volume renters of the three separate groups per week. If that isn't a motel, I don't know what is. And their activities now tailor, our grandchildren playing in the backyard have to watch them, have to have, once they have some parties and gathering down there, we can't even be there on our property. We've subtracted the loud noises, and those are regulations that will come due, I realize that for the, forthcoming. They know, I'm not against short-term rentals, just where they belong, they can, can have them. I'm not against them at all. Certainly not a safe haven for people who live in, in that small small area Hamlet residential. Thank you.
All right, thanks, there. Anybody else? Unfortunately, Mr. Burdenko, you guys were kind of caught, no regulations in this town, that's why we're trying to do this, because we really had regulations.
Mrs. Putney, she's explained that.
Yeah.
So I'm the property manager for 32 Davenport Drive, and, and Mr. Burdenko also tried to short-term rent his property.
Before you finish, could you give your name?
My name is Diane Powers.
Thank you.
Mr. Burdenko also tried to rent his property short-term. There are also other short-term renters on Davenport Drive. There is also a hotel that's been in existence on Davenport Drive for a very long time. I'm not opposed to short-term rentals either. I'm not opposed to regulations. I've been doing it responsibly for a number of years. If the board is interested in having some conversation with me about how I conduct business, I would welcome that. But I am, I'm not, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals. I'm not opposed to regulations. I feel like it can be done very responsibly, and I feel like I have done it very responsibly. I think Mr. Burdenko has some complaints that I've addressed and I've addressed very, very efficiently. And, you know, if, if the board is interested in hearing what I have to say, I would welcome that, but it does sound to me as though the Ford and, like, the Ford and resolution is what you're gearing towards. And if that's the way you want to go, I do have some thoughts.
Well, you'd probably have to go in front of the town board. We don't have the Ford and resolution in front of us, so you had.
Well, I've been, I've been giving the Ford and resolution by Karen Putney when I actually.
We're in, Diane, I gave you Warrensburg, Lake George, and Bolton.
No, you gave me, no, you gave me.
I don't have Ford and.
You gave me Ford and.
I don't have Ford and. All I have is Lake George, Bolton, and Warrensburg.
What did you give me?
One of those or all of those? I'm not sure which one that I gave.
Okay. I will look that up and I will get back to you, but I'm pretty sure you gave me the Ford and, and you told me that that was the way, the direction of the board was going, even though this was supposed to be a workshop. And I, and I, I've looked that over, and I have some thoughts on it. I didn't find anything that was, and I've also reviewed. I, well, maybe you didn't give me, no, you did give me Ford and, you give me Ford and, you told me that that was the direction you were going, and I reviewed that. And I, I actually feel like some of what I'm doing is over and above what that is, is being done. I would, I would have some questions about some of the, the fire marshal, you know, whatever requirements would be there, but I would have no problem with submitting for a permit. I would have no problem. I'm registered with Warren County for occupancy tax. I would also have no problem with Luzerne taking a percentage as well. I do feel like Lake Luzerne is a place where mostly, I, I would also tell you that most of my average renters are 50-plus years old. Their families with an older or a grandparent and a couple children. I have no problem with maximum, maximum occupancy rules. I, I've established those. I've complied with any of the COVID. They weren't laws, but they were recommendations. I added a few my own.
Okay, so, thanks for your comment. We're really not here to.
Yes, I understand. That's why I was just wondering why Mr. Burdenko was allowed to speak at a public, like, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I just wanted to hear what, which way the board was leaning. I was told that that was what, the way they were going and that they were planning on doing something by the end of December, and I have no problem with that. It will, it will allow me to make, it will allow me to make some decisions regarding the future, you know, management of that property.
And that would be the town board, okay?
Okay, well, then why are you workshopping this tonight, then?
Because they asked the planning board for recommendations about regulations. We will get them to them, and then they'll decide what they want to do. We're just.
Okay.
I gave people a chance to speak because they're quite clear, and we can mute everybody.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, did everybody get a chance to look at the? Yeah, there's, well, there's no Ford and, but.
I don't, I don't have Ford and regulation. I just, the ones that I have are the ones that are supplied to you.
I stand, I stand corrected. Karen, you did give me Warrensburg. I do have Ford and, and I've had a chance to review Ford and, just because that was what was in the papers and what everybody was all riled up about. So I, I have looked at both, and I really don't have a problem with either.
Okay, so I can tell you, I went through each one of them, including Lake George, and I, I was kind of leaning towards the Bolton Landing, but that's just my opinion, and we can go through that, but does, does anybody else have a reason to go through, like, George or Warrensburg? I think Bolton Landing took Warrensburg's and made it better. You know, they built upon it, and they, they actually had their regulations afterwards, I think it was a year later, but.
Gosh. And only Bolton was, was definitely the most restrictive.
Right, and that's what, I think that's kind of what we should do with the town, you know, because.
I did notice one of the differences with Bolton, which we've already discussed quite a bit, was back to the RVs and whether you can use an RV as an Airbnb. And Bolton, I think, was the only one that restricted that. Is that correct? Well, all these may, maybe like George too.
Yes.
But again, I, I agree with that. I think, you know, that's a smart idea.
We already kind of sent the board the, our ideas on the, on the RVs right now, yes. They still have to decide.
The only thing I noticed that was different with Lake George is, is if the police are called to the property, it's an automatic violation. I thought it was kind of interesting, not a terrible idea.
I'm sorry. What?
The only difference I noticed when I, when I went through Lake George is, is they actually have a restriction there that if the police are called to the property, it's an automatic violation. And that initial fine would take place.
Okay. So I'm not terribly familiar with all of them yet, but.
This is just when I read through them, I think that was the only one that.
I, I think the board is, I think the regulating this is probably going to fall to my office, and I don't know if they're gonna set up a system like two complaints and you have to come back for a review. Or I don't know what they're going to do, but they're, they've talked about that at the other meetings, so I'll make a note on that about the Lake George is one, one complaint and they're fined.
I think it's, if you have it, it's, what is it? 70, 175-52 B, B, 7.
B is in boy.
7. And then it looked like there was some additional parking restrictions maybe with Lake George.
Yes, which we, we could take the best of everything and put it as our recommendations, because as going through Lake George, the you know, the smoke detectors, the septic systems, occupancy limitation.
I do agree with you with the police, but, I mean, they had, it wasn't just called, is it, they, they found something wrong.
So they had to be actually charged.
It was, for example, an out-of-control party, domestic dispute, a fight, noise, et cetera. So that means the neighbor just can't call, keep calling the police and.
That's a good point.
And end it. So there has to be reason and grounds for them to call, for the violation to take place. Which I like that one.
And then I think there was a minimum stay, one of the towns had a five-night.
Right.
Can I provide some feedback about that? Minimum stays?
I think it should be seven months off.
So can I provide feedback on that? Because I've been doing this for almost 20 years now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Last comment, as we're.
Thank you, thank you. So I have looked at that Queensberry recommendation about five-night minimums, and I would say that the majority of any issue that I may have is with the longer stay, because the longer someone is there, the more app they are to invite other people. I have very strict occupancy requirements. The primary renter has to be on property all the time. They also cannot invite guests beyond the booking amount, and they cannot exceed the maximum occupancy. The longer this stay, and when, when I first started doing this, obviously if somebody was traveling two hours away, that seemed like a long distance for them to invite other people. Now it's not, it's not uncommon for someone to travel four hours for particularly a five hours or a five-day stay. If it's a two-day stay, I have less, I have less issues, and I also feel like it's a greater impact economically to our town because for two nights, they will not bring in a ton of food, they will not cook at the property, they will, they were planning on going out. They go to dinner, they frequent restaurants, they go to Bonds, they go to horseback riding, they go to the hitching post, they go mini golfing, they golf it, bend to the river, they eat out. When you have a longer stay, people tend to invite more people, and you do have to be very, very firm. I patrol the properties constantly. I require that they're only going to be bringing the number of max that they put on booking. Like I said, the primary renter has to be here. I do require a minimum stay of seven nights during peak summer. Non-peak periods, I will do a two, a three, I will never do a one-night stay, never. I will never take a, take a booking that's within 24 hours. I require a signed lease, I require their identification. I also have minimum age requirements. I think a lot of that, I make them not park on the street, they have to park, I, I limit the number of vehicles. I, I have a, I have a number of limitations. I'm sometimes surprised that people want to come back, but they do. Like I said, my average guest is a 40-to-50-year-old adult with their older children, sometimes younger children, and maybe grandma and grandpa. I don't do any renters or any rentals that are multiple families. I did not do that during COVID. I don't also do that for the most part. I don't like a lot of bookings with unrelated guests. I don't allow events. I don't allow parties. I don't allow people to book for a graduation, whether it's college or not. Like I said, the occupant, the primary renter has to be on property all times. They are subject to eviction if they do not adhere to the rules, and they know that. With a longer stay, sometimes that gets pushed, and they will call me and say, oh, you know, this family wants to come. No. They are told about not bringing wood from over 50 miles. They are told about Ivy Island being no trespassing. They are told about noise ordinance. They are told about no parking in the street. They are told about garbage. I do feel like the shorter-term stays are actually pretty vital to this area. I do feel like I grew up in this area. It is a tourist town. It always was.
Okay, thanks for your.
Thank you.
Okay, so. You mean as far as minimum or maximum?
Yeah. I, I think we should have a minimum.
There are also a lot of second homeowners that actually have nine cars just down the road from me.
Excuse me, could you? I thought they muted you, but, you know, we're, this is a, I mean, workshop now, the public's is done commenting, okay?
Tony, what did you say about the length of stay? Were you questioning it?
Yeah.
She wanted a minimum.
Yeah, we need to have a minimum.
Okay.
Two nights would probably be sufficient for a minimum.
Two nights?
Do we have any sense of the ones in town now and what the stays are looking like? We probably have no data on that at all.
No.
I mean, I think the idea of peak season has to be considered, you know, which are, like, June, July, August, maybe even September.
Especially track season.
Right.
When is the car show? Is the car show in the fall now, in September?
Yes, the Lake George, yeah.
So, yeah, there's other events that go on, and then you have the winter carnival that
But I, I think the winter carnival would typically, Tony, be like a weekend.
Right, so that'd be a shorter.
And that's two, goes back to you too.
Yeah.
That is one, one's definitely gonna promote the overnight stay, which is, you know, one of the issues, but you know, two, that kind of negates that, that one-night stay that typically gets your Friday, Saturday leave on Sunday.
And they're gonna spend the day in town, or, you know, in the area, or one, they're spending the night.
What are your thoughts?
I agree with two, I mean, two, I also agree with five, too. Because I feel if somebody's coming here, they're gonna be coming here for the area.
And in season? On a minimum? I.
I, yeah, we definitely have to suggest a minimum that we're all comfortable.
So why don't we like, to summarize every, or, well, to go over everything, we'll, if you want, if we want to use Bolton, we'll go through page by page, add or subtract whatever we want as far as what they're using, and, you know, do you agree? I mean, their first page is basically their purpose and intent, authority and definitions. They get into, definitely want a permit required. And that's done by the owner of the dwelling, which what does the county give them now, Karen? Is it, is it a different kind of permit they give them so they can operate?
Well, the county, Warren County, the building codes office only inspects in Warrensburg and Lake George, and so you're looking at Bolton. The Bolton does their own inspections. The county doesn't go, the county building codes office doesn't go into Bolton at all for this, just Warrensburg and Lake George, and is that what you're asking me?
Well, no, all these LACs that we got.
Yeah, on that list.
They were already.
Well, these are just, the list is just the ones that they know about in Lake Luzerne.
They're already registered, so.
The top ones are already registered, the bottom ones are ones they know about that are not.
So they have to register with Warren County?
Correct.
Okay. That's.
With the treasurer's office for the occupancy tax.
And do they have any regulations, or they just say you're registered?
I am not aware of any, but Mr. Burdenko was quoting some local law, which I have not seen, so I don't know.
It was
from, from the county?
When it was affected, they had to register and they had the code.
I don't have that.
What?
Oh, it was in the actual app, application form. Okay, it's in, it is in the Bolton one, Warren County, New York, here, short-term owners to collect bed tax. It is in there.
So as of right now, they just, they have to register with Warren County?
Yeah.
And if they don't?
Then the county's gonna go after them to get them registered. If they, the county hired some, a firm to research it online to find them. And I think that, I think, and I haven't double-checked this, but I think that they're also doing like a maintenance with this company to keep looking online for any new ones that come up, and they're providing the county with, with the names of. And they're providing the county with, with the names of those. But I will tell you that at zoning board meeting the other night, a couple of the members sat here and said. I know that there are at least four right in my neighborhood that are not on this list. And another one said six, so it doesn't seem as though they've gotten them all yet.
They're not gonna catch them unless they're online.
Right. But that's, that's how their advertising mainly is online, so. And there are new sites that pop up all the time for it, so. I mean, I called Warren County Building Codes and asked them what they look for in their inspections, but I did not call the treasurer's office and. Talk to them, I, I felt that. Either one of the councilmen or perhaps Gene Murino, the supervisor would touch base with the county with their regulations, but. I haven't done it.
Okay, so obviously Luzerne has nothing, that's why we're here to, uh. And they want to start having people. Now, it's gonna be up to, to you, Karen, to, if they don't have permit, go after them too.
I don't know how it's gonna work, that's probably come up in the discussion.
The other thing I saw as far as the time span, um, to Barb's point, um, and the articles relating to, uh, town of Queensberry. Between May fifteenth and September fifteen, short, short-term rentals must require a five-day minimum stay. So that. That's.
They're limiting the amount of days per year to.
One twenty or fewer.
Right.
You don't know, I wonder what the reasoning is behind that, I'm not sure what the.
Alright, so we know the owner has to obtain a permit from, will have to from Lake Luzerne once this is passed. And we're suggesting at least a minimum of two, two nights stay. I'm gonna write it down, the paperwork so we can pass it on.
Minimum of two nights, uh, like not in peak season, not in, do we wanna?
And peak season five. And then off-peak season two days.
So minimum two nights off-season and then five nights during peak season minimum. You don't?
Four.
You think it's a good idea? Got to be curious what, what they're doing now, you know? I mean, we have one example, you know, three people stayed for a week.
I could address that if you want. I could let you know what I'm doing.
Not really, we.
Okay, that's fine.
On board, we're just trying to give them our ideas.
Can you give your name, please? Can you give your name, please? Ronnie Lipson?
Do we want to get him at the table? So we got him on the mic?
Yeah, because it should go on the tape.
Ronnie Lipson, LIPS on.
And your address?
Forty-one Lady Slipper, I only, I just bought it. I came into your building before I bought it, did my due diligence. And everyone was like, oh yeah, you're great, you're fine, I dumped a hundred fifty thousand dollars into this house. And I put it on there for seven day minimum. Nobody rented it. I then pivoted because that's what you're supposed to do, put it down for a two-day minimum and I am booked solid July, August into September. You will crush my business if you make it a five-day minimum.
We're saying two nights during the.
I'm just saying five-day minimum day. People come up here for two days, they come in, they, they, they go to all the wonderful things around Lake Luzerne. It's a great place, we get to show them it's a great place. And, and then they leave, two-day minimums, three, they come two, three, but making it, making someone come up here for five days. Is off-peak, I mean, during the season will absolutely crush me, I just learned that this year. So that, that's my opinion on that, I could also offer you, you've been talking about the law enforcement for I had twenty-five years in law enforcement. I went to these calls. You have to have something established because you're gonna have neighbor disputes where they're just gonna start calling on each other. It, it non-stop, it's gonna cause a huge problem. I mean, I would like as a, as a short-term rental owner, I would like the opportunity to fix the problem before you start finding. Obviously, if I'm a nuisance customer, you keep having your current problems, well then I'm the problem, not the. I'm renting and marketing to the wrong people. But I, I just, uh, I, I have now my seventh tenant in a house. I haven't had one complaint, they're five stars, neighbors love me, well, neighbors don't even, I don't even know if they know. To tell you the truth, because.
Do you mainly rent on the weekends or do you?
I get rented, I could show you my calendar, it comes up Monday, Tuesday, I do get, I do get weekends, but. People can't afford the week, weekends, my house is renting for, on a weekend, four, five hundred dollars a night. So, and I'm using a dynamic pricing app that's telling me what they would charge, I don't even know what to charge. But during the week, you know, it's two seventy-five, three twenty-five, they're, they come up in the summer. And they rent for a couple of days and then they leave and it's great. I would love to, I'll sit you on top, you can, you're open to everything.
What's your season looking like, I mean, are you, are you a seasonal?
No, I'm gonna be up there all year round, I'm hoping for.
Gone through a winter yet?
No, I haven't, I haven't gone through one yet, but we're right on. Yeah, I'm curious to know too.
And do you live local, close by the property?
Uh, I live in Long Island, but I have a house in, I have, I've been coming up here for twelve years, we own a house on the river. I'm sorry.
Who monitors it for you?
I have local, I have a local handyman that, uh, he's, he's a kid, twenty-four-year-old kid, and I have a cleaner, that's a local who lives in Corin. Who's also twenty-three, so we're employing local people. I apologize for interrupting, I just didn't understand the whole. Uh, we're, we're, we're here for you, we want, I want you to get, I want regulations, I want you to be able to. Get rid of the guy that's causing disputes and having a problem, I want to be the guy to bring something forward and help see. Hope's Lake Luzerne, so I'm here if you have any questions for me, sorry to interrupt you.
Samantha Vilmar, I live in Lake George, uh, just bought a property up in the Heights.
What is your last name, I'm sorry?
Vilmar, V I L M A R. Just bought a property up in the Heights last fall, may as well have been completely abandoned foreclosure-type property. Put well over a hundred thousand dollars in it. It's actually two separate buildings, operating it as a short-term rental. But anyway, in regards to your, um, minimum day comment, I know, uh, some of the other towns are doing five days. I think the biggest advantage to going with a short. Um, minimum day rental, and this is year-round, I wouldn't change it by peak season. Is you're constantly having somebody who's responsible for that property in that building. I, on a two-night minimum, I am there every single other day. So if I'm not there Wednesday, I'm there on Friday, like. You don't have that extended period of time for people to settle in and think, hey, this is my house, I can do whatever I want. Just some feedback, and I've even had great reviews from my neighbors as well, also booked into September, um, a hundred percent booked.
Where is the property, is it in Lake Luzerne? What, what was it?
So as far as your percentages, and I know this is kind of hard to put into perspective, but a two-day. Stay versus a five-day stay, what's your demographic, what are you typically seeing for a two-day or a five-day stay?
Uh, I would say we're about seventy percent in two days. I've tried putting three.
But I'm saying demographic, the, the people that rent from you.
Older, younger, kids, now kids.
My property, like I said, I fully renovated it, um, so it's tend to bring in a younger crowd, but young families. I've got a strict four-day or four-person occupancy, no exceptions, no family, no more than two cars, everybody in my neighborhood knows about it. Primarily young families.
And that's your two-day and five-day?
Yeah.
Is this your first season too?
This is my first season, yeah. But we're two buildings, so right next to each other, I. Understand why regulations would come in, being two buildings, I could have eight people there, that sounds like a big party to me. Not happening, so I want one family here, one family there, that's the end of it. Just my offering on two days versus five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yes. Yes.
Hello, my name is Mary Rabidoo. And we have a short-term rental, it's on the river. Now, we also own the property and always there, the property right next door. So, and we have perfect reviews and no complaints at all. One reason I'd like you to reconsider the, allow a two-night minimum is because. We always want to go over to our property for our landscape, it's beautiful. Uh, you maybe, I'm sure you've gone by when you've taken maybe the boat right down the river. I have a beautiful flower garden, my husband does all this wonderful rock work, the landscaping on our property is beautiful. And we wouldn't be able to maintain that if you told us we had to go seven nights. We literally are there, we like being there quite often. Four or five nights is about what we, we prefer that, okay? And it's because we want to maintain the property and quite often when people go by. On their boat, they always compliment our property, so please don't use a broad brush. You know, there's just, you have to really consider each individual. You know, as I say, we live right next door, we have that seasonal, we only rent it during the, you know, May through September, October. And the other residence is year-round and that's where we live. Please, really, you've got to consider everyone, you can't use, just assume everyone's coming from. Okay, thank you.
So it looks like you might have a good idea. So now that we had some input about the two nights.
Seems like that's the very popular, most economical way for people to go.
And there's different, and I like their reasoning.
Yeah.
Property management, one, they're checking on their property, they all have a different reason why.
Yeah.
One is the two nights, it wasn't all the same.
They should have like, I mean, there's, out of the people that we have here, the one guy doesn't live here. We should put somewhere in the regulations, there needs to be a contact person that can.
Well, the gentleman that lives in One Island has. Um, handyman and a cleaner and people like that.
It had to be posted on the building with the name of the owner, their contact information, emergency contact information had to be posted. On the building, and I really liked that, so there was never any questions. Also, the address had to be posted clearly because somebody who's staying there is not gonna know the address if there's an emergency.
I'm not sure exactly how. If somebody meets them there, when they get there, I mean, I'm a short-term rentals, because I remember generally it's digital, I mean, it's. Yeah, that's true. But if the address isn't there, they could be going to them.
Right.
Right.
You know, if there, somebody on the property gets injured, they need to know instantly where they can find out the address where they're staying. Because in a stressed situation, they're not gonna be able to look on their phone for their property agreement, runner's agreement.
Good point.
So we could recommend two nights minimum to the board, whether they decide to use that, that'll be up to them, but. You know, that could be a recommendation. It seems that all the permits that are. Usually valid for three years in all the towns that I've read, then they have to come back and reapply. And they only go with the owner of the property, in other words, if they sell it, then the new owner has to come. And reapply for another permit.
And I know all the trailer parks around here are a year to reply. Get inspected every year.
Right.
So why went short-term, yeah, here, we stay consistent with the same inspection process on property?
Think we talked about the, I guess, the inundated permit.
Right.
Being kind of. Getting me, hitting the town on a frequent basis, alright, the workflow.
But the renewal, we would never have to process the renewal unless there are complaints.
Yeah, I think the only concern was the workload on us.
Right. Unfortunately, they want to. Have right policies, they're gonna have to hire somebody to enforce the policies, or there's no reason to even write a policy.
To reduce the, the workload on Karen.
If they want to write policies and force them, they have to hire somebody to enforce the policies.
I was a little curious about, um. Ten on here with the homeowners association, I don't know how many homeowners associations we have in town. Right now, other. Short-term rentals in homeowners associations, are the homeowners associations allowed to just regulate them at will?
There's some kind of association.
Yeah, there's Northwood's Association as well.
But I don't know if they.
I guess that would be a question for the lawyer, can the homeowners association further restrict them? You know, be on with the town.
And they may not have anything.
Yeah, they probably don't at this point, right? But I bet you have some homeowners associations popping up if.
Reduce the restrictions, but they could absolutely add more.
And then I think it would become a civil matter if there was an issue with it by the homeowners association.
So, just to go to the page three, what you just said about the application requirements, everything that you just talked about as far as. Fees, uh, having somebody. You know, be responsible. Represent, representative's name and contact address, telephone number, email. Also, uh. The address of the house, where to go, I mean, all that's in, in Bolton's, uh, application procedure, which is. As far as a fee, I think that's going to have to be up to the town. What they're going to charge you.
Each, each packet, I think, had an application.
Yes, right. I know there's association, but I'm not sure exactly what they do, but because they've been in front of the board. For, um, permit for cell phone tower. Or no, it was.
They wanted to get the zone changed.
Right. And I think, we put Daines' business in.
I guess my biggest fear is making sure that the properties are actually safe. You know, year after year after year.
No.
Especially if families are coming with little kids, the railing state or the deck state, you know, small things like that, but.
Well, according to Karen, Warren County only inspects Lake George and Bolton.
Warrensburg and Lake George.
So Bolton inspects their houses themselves.
I'm assuming that they do, yes.
So, so who does the? Warren County, would they inspect our homes or we have to?
That's, that will be up to the board to determine whether they're going to have them do it. It would be beneficial to have them do it.
Right.
Number one, they know, they've set the occupant load because they go by the square footage that's allowed in the New York State Uniform Code by the size of the bedrooms and then they allow a certain number like to sleep like on a couch, a certain number in that space and they set the occupant load they look for. Did I provide you with my handwritten notes? I'm not sure if I did and I don't seem to have them with me. I don't know why, but, um, they look for carbon dioxide. The first thing that they do is they look to see if they have on file any violations for the property. Or if there are any open permits that have never gotten their COs and they make them take care of those things before they'll even issue anything. Then they go in and they do a basic fire, a life safety inspection, looking for carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors, handrails, electrical issues. Um, if they see water spots from leaking roofs, they look for trip, tripping hazards on like sidewalks and stairways and walkways and, um, so they're looking at safety more than anything. They set the occupant level and they require them to provide them with a contact name and, and phone number. And it has to be someone local. It can't be, you know, someone absentee and, um,
That sounds like the way that we should go. Otherwise we'd put too much on.
And that's something in Warren, um, Warrensburg, the Warrensburg Plan Proof of Satisfactory, number three for the application, proof of satisfactory inspection for the short term rental property, Warren County.
Yeah, Warren County charges a fee, a seventy five dollar fee. They have to be invited in by the owner of the property because otherwise they don't have a right to be on the property. And so they, they make it that they have to contact them so they can go into the property and.
So that would be in our permit, that would have to be something whoever was looking to get a permit would have to understand that.
I think it's in Warrensburg's application is that they have to contact Warren County. It's, it's written right into the application that they have to contact them.
Page three, line three.
I, uh, I don't know what the board's going to do, but I'm sure that's what we should recommend. Otherwise it's going to be hiring people to do that and more expense. Is that something that they do yearly or?
It's however the town has it set up, whether it's a three year or a one year.
Okay.
It's because I'm not sure in here if Warrensburg's, I think they're both three years. For some reason I seem to think that they're three years.
I know the, the permit itself is three years. I just wondered about the, the, uh, Warren County.
I think it's, it's whenever the permit is up for renewal, they go back in.
Yeah, because most commercial businesses are the same way, you know, just to get us to a good occupancy, you have to build the permit to get a fire inspection before you can actually open a business, so.
How many years for businesses?
Typically three.
Three years?
Yeah, usually the fire marshal circle back on the third year, reinspect, purchase, basic.
And, and it depends where you live. Like I worked in Albany, they came every year.
It depends on what kind of business that you have as to how often the state requires them to be inspected. But this short term rental thing would probably be whatever the town ends up adopting for their time period of their permit. That's when they would have them go back in and reinspect. Now, of course, if you've got complaints, that something, you know, and something had changed. If you get a complaint and you go in and you find something has changed, then, then you address that. That would be like a violation and you would be addressing it, so. Surprisingly, Warrensburg says they've only had one violation in the whole time since they've made their regulations.
How long ago did they implement?
Two thousand nineteen.
Two, two thousand nineteen.
So.
Surprise.
Or we can make it two. It doesn't have to be three. Well, I think with that kind of turnover and usage, they're
the property was in there.
Yeah, which is good, which is good. But I do think a permit contingent upon inspection is important. Especially if you're like, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, like a pool or something like that.
I'll just make sure.
And, and.
Fire extinguishers.
Right. Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Nancy Miller, did you want to speak?
Hi, this is Al Miller. And I own on fifteen Tomahawk. I also built another home on Lakeview and that we sold and we've been here over thirty years. My concern, and I, I agree with you with all the restrictions that Warren County should adopt for the inspections. I own various rental properties, apartment buildings in the surrounding springs and also in the Caribbean. And so I'm well versed in being subject to inspections. What I have not heard here, and I assume that Warren County would do all the routine life safety inspections, but what I have not heard here is the older camps around the lake in which are my neighbors. Their septic systems, which are typically seepage pits, which could accommodate years ago, one to two to three people. Now you're seeing rentals anywhere six to eight or six to ten or even more. And you see them pumping out seepage pits, which are not legally health approved septic, septic systems in leach fields. And my concern is that what is the board going to do or what are you going to recommend to the board regarding the surrounding properties that are polluting the lake? You're talking about people that are renting and their seepage pits are within thirty feet of the lake in which we know, we all know, we have a pollution of milfoil and other weeds. So that, that's my comment. I like to hear what your opinions are.
That was actually included in the Warren County inspection.
That's included in the Warren County inspection. And as far as people that aren't renting, I think that's something you have to take up with the town board because.
It's not rent. I'm talking about the renters.
That surrounding properties, didn't you?
The surrounding properties are people, there are Airbnb renters in which it used to be a few. Now it's a dozen.
That's where Warren County would come in and take, that's why we're going to Warren County route because they're, they're, they're the ones that would inspect that.
I'm not sure that the county.
That's good, but you know, when you talk about health codes and what you have to apply to get your permits for a legal septic system, you're talking about bedroom and occupancy in which when you increase both, it becomes a nuisance. It becomes a problem. And the problem is going to, in the long term, affect the lake. And, and, and that's going to be a disaster for the town of Lake Luzerne. I just wanted to voice my concern. I've been doing this and I've been doing it for many years, forty, fifty years. So I'm an old timer at this.
Can I respond to Mr. Miller a little bit and address septic concerns in some of my rentals? Okay, so one of the things that the board has requested was, or questioned was why would an owner, who has a property, why would they want to rent short term? Many of my owners who I work with have reinvested by renting short term in their properties. I have at least, I have one septic application for an owner currently in process. There, another owner last year on a property that had been abandoned for two years, the owner often frequented the property with over fifteen to twenty of his family. He owned it. He never rented it short term. He never did anything about the septic tank. It was inoperable. He continued to come and he continued to use the toilet and the facilities. That property has been a brand new septic tank and that's what some of these owners are doing. It is not, I agree with Mr. Miller, the, the septic situation up in the Heights near the lake, it, it is not a good one. But many of these properties that the owners are renting short term are using the funds to improve their properties. Some of these properties have been abandoned for years. They are repairing roofs. They are actually putting in new septic, new water lines. The, the septic, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, I understand, but I'm going to tell you that also some of the septic systems that are derelict and are not up to code are not just short term rentals. There are a lot of, uh, permanent residents that have failing septic systems. There are a lot of second homeowners that have failing septic systems. And I believe it is something that's being addressed by the, um, Warren County Septic Inspection Upon Transfer Resolution. However, I don't even think it goes far enough. Um, Lake George does have an annual septic resolution for any property that's near the lake. I do recommend that. I think that I'm fully in support of that. Anyone who has lakefront, um, they are privileged and that is a great thing. Um, but that, they do have an added responsibility to protect the lake. If you look at the, um, Lake Luzerne planning, uh, document, the, the, um, oh God, I'm, I'm failing with my words, but, uh, the, the plan, it does say Lake Luzerne is primarily a tourist town. It has, it has great responsibility around the water and that does need to be addressed. They, I, I do think that it's not just a problem that's indicative of short term rentals. I do think there's a lot of, of second homeowners who come up here and they use their properties for whatever time period. I, I see it. I live up here. I see a lot of properties that are not being rented short term. There's excessive occupancy and they're, and they're pounding that septic system. I do feel like there are a lot of short term rentals that are being managed very responsibly. And a lot of owners are actually reinvesting in their properties. I do not think that this is primarily a short term rental problem. I do think it's a septic problem that does need to be addressed. I am concerned about it. There is milfoil in the lake. Um, and, and a lot of that is somewhat contributed to seepage of septic systems around the lake, but I don't see that as, I feel like the short term renters are that. I mean, I'm not saying that there aren't short term rental properties that do need updates. Obviously they do. But if you look around the lake and you kind of live here, you, you see there are a lot of second homeowners. There are a lot of primary residents. There are a lot of, uh, owners that have not transferred title that they just, they're just ignoring a, an increasingly bad problem.
Okay, so, all right, I think we've had enough discussion about that. Excuse me.
Night finished?
Well, we're going into, we're going off track here. We're just, as part of our inspection by Warren County, we'll let the board know that we think they should inspect the septic system.
What about?
And we can't, I don't want to go off track. We're just talking about.
I'm not going off track.
Okay.
Can I finish please or? All I'm saying is existing Airbnb are not compliant with.
You're right. We don't have any regulations in the town right now. That's why we're having this meeting.
Maybe that should be your comment.
Right.
That existing, I'm not talking about.
Right, we have no regulation.
But you're, but you're asking, you're asking to hold to a higher standard, a short term rental as opposed to a primary residence. And that's the problem. A primary residence is used for three hundred and sixty-five days a year and a short term rental, maybe eighty. So what's the greater impact to the lake or to a failing septic system? If you have a prime, if you have a primary residence, hands down, if you're using a failing system, that is something.
I'm going to have to cut you off because we need to get into. Okay, back to what we're talking about, short term rentals, septic systems. We'll have to find out if Warren County does that.
I mean, they're debating that at county level right now, septic issues.
Right, and they haven't adopted anything yet.
What we're here for tonight.
Right.
And it is addressed in Article Six.
And I do know that the town board has been talking about, um, the septic being an issue. That, that the systems are not, that in, will not, they're, want to make sure that the systems are not overloaded, which is I don't know if they're going to require that they have an inspection by a reputable company to determine the size of the tanks and what can be, you know, the number of persons that it can handle. I don't know what the outcome of that will be, but they are talking about it. They're aware that the septic is an issue. And I don't know how they're, how.
It's going to be applied to every lakefront property. It's, it's not.
Right.
It's not to be discussed. You know, you can't single out Airbnbs for septic inspections and not every other lakefront property.
Right, but that's something that could be adjusted in code enforcement, right? The septic, wouldn't that be adjusted in code enforcement?
Warren County, number one, doing inspections.
Septic is not always done by the Warren County Building Codes Office. Septic is done, I, any new or repair of a system here in town, I inspect. Um, and other towns, I think the only towns that the county has jurisdiction in is the town of Stony Creek and Thurman. I think all the other towns have their own person in town that does septic regulations.
So right now you do the inspections for the town.
For any new systems and repairs, yes.
So would that be something, I mean, if we go with the short term rental.
I'm not, I'm not going to be able to go into a house and determine if a system is large enough to handle the occupant load, not knowing what is in the ground. You actually would have to have an inspection by a reputable company to do that.
So we can recommend that to the board.
And they're saying that's part of the New York State Department of Health Regulations Appendix Seventy-Five. And they're saying that's part of the New York State Department of Health Regulations Appendix Seventy-five A.
Right, that determines that, that regulation sets, like, the number of bedrooms depend, sets the size of the tanks and the leaching field. That's what that regulation does. But the point is, these people are trying to make, a lot of these systems that exist don't meet this regulation. They don't, they're old systems, they were, they don't meet the current regulations. And so how do you know if they're going to handle the load that a house will get?
I just think, you can't really go down the path that just because it's a short term rental, the septic system is automatically going to get more usage, because that's not, that's not necessarily the case.
Right.
It could get less usage. So I think, I think it's separate debate, I guess is all I'm saying, I mean, this is.
It's basically, will the septic system support what they want to rent it for, or for how many people they're renting it for, for their maximum occupancy? No different than.
And that's where.
Will your septic system support how many people you plan on living in your house?
We have that written in, we have the occupancy limits written into the, you know, the guidelines right now, so I don't know that we can.
Warren County does, kind of does that, right Karen, when they come in, the inspections, they tell you the size of the room?
They tell me the occupant load by the size of the room, right, but the seventy-five A regulation doesn't address the number of people in the room, they address the number of bedrooms in a house. Like, when you go from three to four bedrooms, you've got to increase from a thousand gallon tank, holding tank, to a fifteen, to either a fifteen hundred or a twelve hundred and fifty gallon, it's, goes from three to four bedroom, it changes. So it, it doesn't use the number of people, it uses the number of bedrooms.
So if they finished up the bed, the basement and bunk beds down there, the house was not built.
Right, but the county, when they're looking at that, will see that that's not a legal bedroom, and will limit that, the number of occupants based on that. If they have a two bedroom house, and each bedroom is, let's just say, ten by twelve, and it's a hundred and twenty square feet, they have a formula that per person, you have to have sixty square feet, they're allowed two persons in that bedroom. If it, if it's larger, more, if it's smaller, less, and that's the figure that they use for the occupant load. But you're also allowed to take the living space, the living room space, figure that square footage, and come up with a number for someone to sleep there as well, like on a couch type situation. It, the, the figure is less than the bedroom space, but it is allowed. That's where they come up with the occupant load number.
So what is your suggestion?
As far as what? The septic? I think that a- as part of the permitting process, they probably should at least, at a minimum, have an inspection by a reputable company that the system is working. And then if it becomes overloaded, you're going to come, you're going to have an issue, and they're going to have to address that issue at that point. But I think as a very minimum, they should have it looked at to make sure that it is a a working system, similar to what I guess a bank would require in a sale, you know, that, that it's a working system.
So that's going to be a fee?
Well, it may be a fee, I, I, you know, but again, these are recommendations that you're going to make, I don't know what they will.
What's up, board?
We could recommend that we want Warren County to inspect it, and we could recommend that we also want a septic inspection.
Well, I think it gets a jump on that whole septic issue, that whole separate issue, and at least with, at least short term rentals will have some kind of coverage or protection there, and if you're an owner, what, wouldn't it be who viewed it, make sure that the septic system is working properly and pumped out regularly, or whatever that means?
Maybe they might find a problem before it's a huge problem, it's a minor problem.
John, you want a break, so he can change that?
Okay, most septic systems are.
All right, we're going to stop for a minute, because we've got to change the CD. Thank you. Okay, John.
All right, yeah, I was just saying, most septic systems are fairly close by to the house anyway, so if you're doing short term rentals, your guests are either going to be walking into the backyard where you have a bunch of seepage, because there's a septic issue, or the pageant's in there, because it's backing up into the house. I think, at that point, it's kind of a, you have to resolve it.
Right.
We also address, in some of these code enforcement officers, as far as violations, like noise, and would that be you, or is it going to be yourself?
I don't do noise ordinance, if, if someone has a problem with noise, you have to call the Sheriff's Department, nine one one. Yeah, I mean, they're going to have to talk about, you know, all of that, the enforcement, you know, providing each one with the noise ordinance, and.
I definitely think that ten P M to seven A M.
Yeah, so they, they have a quiet between the hours of ten P M and seven A M daily.
One of the comments was, being that we just got by the Fourth of July, was firecrackers and fireworks.
More, Bolton doesn't, yeah, no fireworks at all.
Yeah.
Fireworks are prohibited on my properties, any of them. Um, but I'll have a question. In terms of septic and in terms of occupancy, are there current requirements or restrictions on long term, and when I mean long term, greater than thirty days rentals? And are there requirements for primary homeowners as far as occupancy, maximum occupancy, or septic requirements? Because a lot, again, a long term renter, and, and to, and to the other gentleman's point, who was renting short term, and the other woman, and I did state it earlier, someone's terrible for two nights, they're gone. Someone's terrible for seven nights, they're gone. Someone's terrible for thirty days, it's harder, you have to evict them. Someone's terrible for three hundred and sixty-five days, and they're renting. It's, it's a, it's a bad problem. Are there requirements for septic, are there maximum occupancy requirements for thirty days? And are there maximum occupancy rules for primary residents? Because some of these properties have nine cars. On a weekly.
We're looking into for the short term, there's nothing, that's why we're having the meeting, the town board.
Is there, I, my question, is there anything for a, a thirty day or greater, someone who's renting long term? And is there anything for a primary, like, because where I live in New Hampshire, there were ma- maximum occupancy, occupancy rules for primary residents as well?
No, there is, there, there's nothing in place in Luzerne for that.
Thank you.
Hello, can, can I speak? Hello? I'm online, Al Mellor?
All right.
Can I speak?
A- as long as it's relevant now, because, you know, we're going off and tangent last couple of times. It's not relevant, I'll interrupt you, but go ahead.
Okay, my only concern is not with new development or new ownership or whatever, it's just lakefront. And my, if you, if they do inspect and they know that it's inadequate, do they have to comply with APA standards?
Existing places, is that what you're asking?
Yes, existing that are now, used to be residential, are now Airbnb.
I don't think A P, I don't think the Adirondack Park Agency has any regulations about them, I think they're leaving it to the individual municipalities to govern them.
Karen, if they had to replace a system, they would have to comply with the setbacks of APA, correct?
Those are written into our, our septic ordinance, yes.
So that possibly could be an issue with lakefront property, which is very.
It is, there is a process in place that if you can't meet the regulations, you can file for a waiver with New York State Department of Health Regional Office. It has to be done under the direction of an engineer, an engineer has to do a system and submit a waiver form to New York State Department of Health on any system that doesn't, that cannot meet the general standards. It's done through the New York State Department of Health.
Okay, I understand that, we've done that, okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, so at this point, the town, we've decided to recommend a two night minimum stay all year long. I guess we're going to go with the three year, like all the rest of the towns, and after three years, they have to reapply. If any, that anytime they sell to another person, that person, it doesn't go with property, a new person has to come and reapply.
Okay.
Those are our recommendations. Uh, we're going to go with Warren County, we're going to suggest Warren County be the inspectors for the homes. Unless, unless the town wants to go and hire people to do that, but that's going to be our recommendation.
That's fire and safety, right?
Yeah.
As far as the fee, I think the town will set that, so we're not going to do anything about that. Yes, we're going to recommend that you do a septic inspection, but that's going to be totally up to them, how they're going to do it.
As part of their application.
Yes. Also recommend that quiet time from ten P M to seven A M. And under the permit statute, we want to make sure there was name, address, telephone number, so that they could get ahold of the, whoever's responsible, may not be the owner, but it has to be a responsible person that can take care, address an issue immediately. Primary contact person.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think they have to, you know, figure that part out, I'm not sure.
We're going to have to.
The staff needs it, though.
On page seven of Bolton's, where it's, it's short term rental essential performer standings, standards. There is a lot of good items, which I think we should recommend. As far as compliance with the federal, state, and local laws, rules and regulations imposed by the short term rental owner shall be provided in writing to each renter and available at all times. Obviously. That's what it says, that's C, yeah, that's C, so it should be posted conspicuously within five feet of the main entrance. These officers should know about the garbage pickups, depending on where they live, Monday or Tuesday, you know. Garbage containers be provided.
Instead of, um, shall provide, well, okay, it's town pickup, okay, never mind.
The house number visible from the street or road shall be maintained. The short term rental owner shall make available, if requested by any nearby residential property owner within a hundred and fifty feet radius of the boundaries of the short term rental property, a copy of their current short term rental permit.
At the site, can we do?
Yeah.
No. Yeah.
Unless there's an issue. We don't address it, so.
It'll just be done through my office, right?
It's basically, yeah, all the rules on seven, where the last one is, shall maintain current and accurate owner and agent or representative information and contact information, which would be the town of Lake Luzerne. And immediately, be notified of any material changes from the information originally supplied from the time of issuance, their permit. If it's changed, they may have to amend their permit immediately. Page eight, there's more rules, which I think we should recommend, where each owner or agent for the owner of short term rental premises shall require that their rental occupants conduct themselves in accordance with all the requirements of the town of, well, in this case, Lake Luzerne ordinance, we do have a noise ordinance, don't we Karen?
Yes.
Okay. And act peaceably and not in violation of New York State Penal Law, or in violation of the zoning court of the town of Lake Luzerne. It also states in there that short term rental premises shall be quiet between the hours of ten P M and seven A M. And permits may be suspended or revoked for any violations of the ordinance. There's an interesting thing here, which, unless it's there, which I don't, I, I think when they submit for the permit, Bolton has no tent, canopy, travel trailer, motorhome, camper, your vessel, motor vehicle, or temporary structure shall qualify for use or occupancy as a short term rental in the, in, in this instance, the town of Bolton, but I think that would be a good
Yes.
requirement for us.
I also think a storage building should be added to that.
Okay. The next item was.
Had a bed and an air conditioner in it.
Did you? Also, the appearance of a short term rental property shall not interfere with the residential character of the premises, including the surrounding properties or the neighborhood. No for rent or advertisement sign shall be permitted at the short term rental dwelling. And the last one was the no fireworks display should be permitted on the short term rental property. Rental? Or just? But we can make that a, a regulation.
Would that fall under, it's pretty specific. Says no for rent.
Right.
In quotes, so I don't know that an Airbnb sign would fall under that.
But I like the Airbnb, only because it, you know, people are coming, they don't know where they're going. I would rather not have them see that, say, okay, then go to a stranger, be in and out of ten different addresses, looking for their house.
As long as it doesn't say for rent.
Right.
Of the no fireworks, I put no firework. The no fireworks, I put no fireworks and no fireworks displays. I think that could be misinterpreted.
Yeah, the actual.
Display.
They actually have fireworks displays in, in the rule, shall be permitted.
So you, you think it should read no fireworks or firework displays?
Yes.
Their next page is enforcement and penalties, which I think the town will have to decide on what they wanna do with that. Right. Under their rules and regulations, there was a couple of things that I thought was. Short term rental must provide sufficient parking spaces to accommodate the maximum occupancy. And they shall not park on any part of lawn of the.
What page are you on?
Page fourteen. And it's number forty seven. And the first thing, which was what we were talking about, the septic systems was. A maximum number of overnight occupants residing there and based upon the functioning. Capability of the premises onsite wastewater septic system. And as may be evidenced by a septic inspection report, which for good cause may be required by the planning office. So that's what we're asking the board to do.
Now, this does say may, though it doesn't say there.
Does say may, maybe.
That means it's optional.
That means that if someone complains that they think there's a septic issue, then the planning office has a right to. Have it, you know, have them have it looked at, that's the way I would read that.
We should, we could just say.
Well, we're gonna ask the board to do that, recommend that, right?
And is required by a septic inspection report.
Now, as far as overnight occupants, Warren County, when they do their inspection, is gonna tell us how many people were allowed to be in that house. So that's what we'll use, 'cause I think Bolton makes their, their own decision.
Right, that's what that two is about.
Right. Yeah, short term rental must provide sufficient parking spaces, we want to do that.
One of these had a formula for the number of cars that were allowed.
It was on Bolton, it was number two, where it says. Seventy square feet for one overnight occupant or one hundred square feet for two overnight occupants.
That's the sleeping room.
Okay.
One of, one of these had something about parking.
Under the basic safety, safety standards that Bolton has, that's where Warren County comes in. For their inspection, it says New York State codes, fire code, maintenance, property maintenance code.
That's all, that's all the county stuff.
Okay. Do they check the fireplaces and all that too, and when they go in there?
I don't think that they do.
Cause. I mean, somebody renting, or the owner might think nobody's gonna use the fireplace in the middle of the summer and. Got a fire in our hands. Could that be something that we could have the fire department inspect?
I know that if someone has a chimney fire, whether it's a wood stove or a fireplace, the county requires them. To have it inspected by a reputable, like chimney sweep company.
Right.
And, you know, they may have to have it relined or whatever, but I don't know that you could, well. I don't know whether anyone would require. A fireplace or a wood stove to be inspected. That might be part of Warren County's safety inspection.
Okay.
I can, fireplace inspection isn't part of Warren County. Ask them that.
As far as, as I was going through this compliance standards, I think that's just a collection of taxes by Warren County, which doesn't really. Affect us. County's gonna come after them for their occupancy taxes. And we don't have a. Sewerage disposal, so. But that's where the, we wanna get the septic tanks inspected. I don't know, I think that's it, unless there's something else somebody can think of that we can.
I was wondering if Karen, you have some sense of, I mean, overall. Is there a lot of money being invested in the community through rehabilitation of old camps? I mean, what have you seen over the last few years? Is this a positive thing in general?
I know that I get. When, just recently, there was a big. Boom on buying and selling of houses, and a lot of houses were. Bought at that time for sure, short term rental purposes. And I got a lot of calls, were there any regulations in place? No, there were not, and. I don't know if they are renovating these places, or if they're just. You know, I, I know, like, I don't wanna use names. For obvious reasons, but I know that some people have come in and have upgraded a couple of septic systems on houses that are gonna be used. But it's, but. I'm not, we're not getting an abnormal amount of permits for renovating. But they may just be doing it without getting the permits, because that's what happens. And part of the reason for requiring a new owner to get a new permit rather than pass it from owner to owner. Is that people buy places, they come in, they renovate, they change things, and they might be changing a life safety. Part of, of the property such as, you know, changing out a handrail or. You know, remove, changing a window size, making it smaller, it's not gonna be large enough for a means of egress out of a bedroom space, that kind of thing, so. That's why it's kind of important to get these inspections from owner to owner to owner as it changes. But in answer to your question, I haven't seen an abnormal amount of renovating permits coming through. But we may not be getting them all either.
And looking through their town of Bowens. Application. Versus the town of Warrensburg. They had a lot of information on there, which I think would, our town should adopt, as far as. Property owners, the local primary contact. Applicant agreements. And then you actually have a. Now, this says sample site plan, is that, that's, I guess it's just so they know. Or that not necessary, to have something like that, yes. Just to provide, so people know what we're looking at, or, or when they apply, should they have a picture, I don't know.
A sample site plan is not a bad thing, because then you have on file. What is on the property, and then if you get any complaints, you'll know if something has been added, not reported, whatever. But also, it'll give you an idea like where parking is going to be, and. Also, it allows for the tenants. To know, because some of the complaints that are coming through are trespassing complaints from the neighbors.
Right.
And they need to stay on the property and not be going on to someone else's property. So a sample site plan is not a bad idea.
So that would be something we could. Pass on to the board that we recommend.
And on the rules and regs, John. Number five, no fireworks or firework displays.
Now, what, what the board will be doing is putting together. Some kind of regulations, and then they will hold a public hearing. On them, and people will get a chance to. The public will get a chance to count on them and make suggestions as to how they feel they might want them changed.
Now, they're meeting on the twenty fifth, that's just.
It's another workshop for them to come up, they haven't put anything together yet.
So they will have our, our information or no by then, probably not.
Well, I, I mean, I've gotta, I've gotta get it together somehow or other, it doesn't allow me a lot of time, but I, I've gotta. Put something together for them from you, so I may almost ask you to come in and we'll go through it page by page again, and. But they'll have it by that meeting night. One way or the other.
Do something, I mean, I'm glad we're doing something. Sure, it's thanks to you, Mr. Burdenko. Pushing the board that night, and then, you know, a bunch of us saying we gotta do something because we can't. We've gotta have something in place, some kind of regulations, rather than nothing.
You'll be available to come to that meeting.
What day is it?
Monday, the twenty fifth at six.
Yes.
Today's Tuesday, just so the board knows, we will be having a meeting the twenty seventh. Regular, I mean, I have one item in my office right now, it's that. Boundary line adjustment for Mr. Flanigan that made the presentation at the last meeting. He's got his survey done, so that'll be in front of us, and I may have one more if it comes in tomorrow. Which is a subdivision that we did last year for. Guido Passarelli's property, they never followed through and did the Mylar and took it to the county and recorded it, and now they're looking to do. More of a subdivision on the other part of the parcel, and they can't move forward until they've got it recorded at the county, so. They're gonna come back in just to get it reapproved within the time period that is required, so that'll. Maybe be in front of us today, as of today, I still don't have the paperwork from them.
One last thing. In August, we're scheduled to have a meeting, I think on the twenty. Fourth, that's not right on my phone.
August. One, two, three, four, is the twenty fourth, yes.
So I personally can't make that meeting. So we can. Somebody else can lead, or we can have it the week after on another day, which, whatever the board wants to do, I mean, you wanna wait till the thirty first, we can have it, or. Just have it that day, I mean, somebody can't make it. Is there anybody that can't make it the twenty fourth, first of all, other than myself? I'll be at Spac watching my son perform on stage. Encanto, it's the movie, they got one of all the awards, Disney hired a bunch of musicians to have a, show the movie and have a sing along. And so he's hired one of the guitars, so.
We can still have the meeting, just someone else would have some chairs, that's all. We can talk about it at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Just if you, for some reason, people can't make it, then we'll change it to maybe a Tuesday or Thursday or.
Okay, so are we set with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Taking everybody else's.
I, whoever is iPad, go ahead.
Hi, how are you?
Good, can you identify yourself?
Yes, Brianna Boss, six, six, five, East River Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I heard the, the comment about trespassing with the, with their rentals, but I own a property and I short term rental it, and. I have found that my neighbors that own the properties next door have trespassed more on my property than my rent is at. So I was just wondering, is there something that would be done about that, or?
Well, you can always put up a no trespass sign on your property.
No, but I, I have had them take pictures of my rentals and said, like, the, these are the people that are renting your house, like. And. It, it goes both ways, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's it. Make a bet, shouldn't that we?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Is that it? I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that it goes both ways with rentals and property, you know, to people that live there.
Well, probably what would happen is, if trespassing on your property, you would call, just like they would call it, you know. Make a noise. If the rentals were, they would call, it would be something you would handle that way, I would assume.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm also saying that it goes both ways with people complaining about trespassing.
Okay, thanks for your comment.
Anything like that, for.
Yeah, that's a good point, I don't know, well, it's just, it's just be like going to Motel.
Yeah.
You don't really have any control.
You know, from schools and.
But right, but if they're renting a house next to a family that has kids, I mean, you know.
Yeah, you really don't know.
That's nothing we can ever. I don't know, I was just thinking about it, thinking, you know.
The owner, the owner. But I don't know if you can actually put that in regulation or something. You know, it's. Therein lies the rub.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, well, you don't know, the person that bought the house knows who. Next door person, you're talking about, it's people that rent it.
The people that are running.
Yeah, are they pedophiles, are they offenders, or?
And they're renting a house next to.
Kids.
A family that, you know.
Probably just do a regular standard background check. If you're doing, you know, just the, the standard, one year lease and do a background check, just like you're renting. Your house or apartment or, and standard. One year lease into a background check, just like you're renting your house or apartment for an extended period of time.
But in case of short term rental, I don't know. I don't know if you could do that because, well, hotels, motels don't do that, you know.
Yeah. But I think it's like an Airbnb operator, there's got to be some kind of pre-screening, you know, if you get somebody who's looking to rent for you for a certain period of time. Certain criteria that kind of weed out those. You know, people that are kind of looking to do harm.
I don't know. I I I'm not familiar with. Anything like that. I I don't know. I don't know.
People that have mentioned that, you know, based on either the people that are trying to rent for the duration of time. Their reviews, you know, their backgrounds, you know, the kind of pre-screening questions. But that's actually a really good, it's a good thought.
Yeah. I second the motion.
All in favor.